I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may have noticed we're missing a person here. Ron, can we hear us okay?
Yes, I hear you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay.
We're good. All right, moving on. The entertainment motion to approve the agenda as posted and sent to the news media 24 hours prior to the meeting.
So moved.
One second.
Motion by Ms. Greffies, second by Ms. Rhodey. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next we have the leadership statement. The city of Hampton endeavours at all times to promote and model the principles of professionalism, trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In conducting this evening's meeting, we expect that all participants will act in a respectful manner consistently with these principles. Thank you. Next we have the council workshop from Monday, August 25th. I won't read that to you for obvious reasons, so it is available online if anybody would like to review that. Next item up, we have a public comment. Is there any public comment tonight? Not hearing any. We'll move on. No public hearings, no old business. New business. We got Considerate Mr. Steve Hewling and Jeff Winters to make upgrades to the Frisbee Golf Course located in East Park. That was going to be on the agenda to move forward with the improvements. However, you've come up with plans to expand the course from a nine to a 15-hole course. In doing this, this will require additional work to the course, moving some of the previously planned holes and some additional cost and resources. So tonight we will not be taking action on approving the changes that we discussed on Monday. However, since we have it on the agenda and Mr. Hewling and Mr. Winters are here, we'll have them present the new plan, and so everybody's aware of it, and then we will place it on the September 8th workshop to continue more discussion on that. So whoever wants to start out, Mr. Hewling?
I think back to last year when I asked about getting pickleball nets, and Pat, you said, "Why aren't we getting two?"
Yeah.
Drove by the other night, both courts were busy.
Yeah, absolutely.
Both Jeff and I, on our own independently, realized we're not dreaming big enough. And we actually, Jeff just today, has a way, he thinks we can get 18 holes out there, which is a magic number. When we look for a course to play, and we've driven, I just started this sport last summer, but we've gone to over 24 different towns and played the courses there. And when we see an 18-hole course, we have an app that we look at, we check out, we're gonna go there. If it's a nine-hole, maybe if it's on the way, we'll stop. But if it's an 18, and it's got good ratings, we're gonna stop. Just today, we're in Waverly playing, another couple was there, and I started chatting with them. I said, "Have you played here before?" "No." "We're from St. Louis, we're on our way up to Minnesota to play. We saw the rating here for the Waverly Disc Golf Course. We stopped." Because it's got a great rating. It's on a scale of one to five, they're a 4.5, one of the top ones in this part of the state. They stopped because of that. And we think that'd be pretty cool to see Hampton be a destination, or a stop along the way. And 18 holes is gonna do it. And Jeff did a bunch of work today, and we're confident we can do 18 holes out there and not have the weeds or the creek coming to play on any of them, except for the one hole we talked about on Monday, which was a very easy shot over the water. But...
What you mentioned today.
Guys looking for discs in their weeds and stuff, they're not gonna come back. So obviously, that's gonna raise the cost. And I guess the main thing we're asking from the city is, do you approve of us tackling something like this, fundraising and stuff? And then, in the future, are you able to commit any funding for it? We've looked at prices of the baskets. We'd be talking nine of them. And if you order nine of them, basically $1,000 cheaper for ordering nine at a time, whereas if we ordered one at a time and just kept putting them in, by the time we got to nine, we would've spent the equivalent of two extra baskets. Shipping on them, they're heavy, so that's a big issue. But the big thing we realized as far as 18 was, why are we worried about soccer being in the way when all but two months, they're not even out there? And even during those two months, they're not out there until school's out, and on the weekends. The rest of East Park, it's available to go out and throw and play disc golf. And we also looked at, with what Jeff just came up today, if soccer was going on, you could still play 12 holes. And right now, out of our nine, you can't play nine if there's soccer going on. There's two holes you couldn't play at all. But with, we have a plan with 18, a person could come, and yes, soccer's going on, but you could still play 12. So we just think, we just need to dream bigger. If we're gonna do this, let's do it right. And let's make this a destination. And our number one thing though is, we really wanna see more people in the town get to do it. You know, we would love to get participation out there. I just started this last summer. I'm so hooked. He just started it four years ago. He's an addict. We think there's some other addicts out there.
I don't know yet.
You wanna add anything, Jeff?
Yeah.
Yeah. One of the reasons I looked is because one of the Rotarians asked me, "Well, can't we do 18?" And I talked to Bill yesterday, ran into him out there, and he says, "Well, you thought about 18?" I went, "Well, let me look at 18. Let's just see if we can..." I didn't think we could, but I could. And I know tournaments, when I look for tournaments, I get in a lot of tournaments. I'm not gonna go to a nine-hole course. I'm gonna go to 18-hole course. And I think I can even, I've been around enough tournaments, I can tap into some people with experience and run a tournament here and bring people to town. So I think April, May, June, and July would be great months before soccer starts. You could have a Saturday tournament and bring a lot of people to town. I know the little town of Rowland, Iowa, they have two little courses. And I go there, they do have a best-shot tournament, but I go there, and it's a fundraiser for their course. So that's the other thing we can do with tournaments, is if we do raise some money and need to have some extra to pay back, or get some extra things, we can raise money through a tournament to help fund it as well. So I want this to be a place where, I wanna go to Hampton and play disc golf. There's 18 holes there, and it's really nice. And we think, like Steve said, we got a course that... And also, I was in a tournament, well, it's the National Senior Games, we're in Des Moines, and they said pickleball is the number-one growing sport, and disc golf's number-two. So we think we can get ahead of the game as this builds. And I think with promoting it, we can have leagues, we can have tournaments. I think there's a lot of things we can do if we have a course that people wanna play and don't have to lose disc and look in the water like they do today. So that's kinda how this came about. That's why we're asking for more, because we thought, well, as long as we're doing this... The other thing I thought is, well, the 15, how does that work? If someday we can add 18, why we just don't do it now while we're doing it? Instead of having that come out twice, or whatever. Anyway, that's kinda where we got where we're at.
Probably gonna save some money by doing it all at one time instead as well.
Yep, 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 agree.
And if we had to do it in two phases, we need baskets first. We can get by without the cement pads, easily, until we can get, you know, that money raised. But you obviously can't play if you don't have a target to shoot at.
Right.
So if the baskets came first, we could get the signage and the cement pads, you know, later as funds became available. I'm willing to look for grants. I've been suggested we talk to the tourism board, and they said there's some grant applications you can do there. So you got two guys here that are willing to do the work.
That's good. Mr. Lamos?
I think we need a few more people like you guys to help promote Hampton. And your thinking ahead is a great idea.
Thank you, Barry. Thanks.
So the standard, you know, nobody goes to a regular golf course and plays 15 holes.
Right.
So I mean, so what you're explaining to us is, at a standard, disc golf, it's either nine or 18. Yeah, you wouldn't do 15, so...
We knew we were doing 15, because that's what we thought we had space for.
Tell me the story on these brooms that you need for each station. What's that all about?
Listen, that's a fairly new course, like, it's three years old, and it's really nice. And they have rooms hanging at each basket.
And Hampton will all be stolen. So I mean, I don't know if you... They'll all be stolen.
We can get by without them if we need to, and we could carry on. But it's just for when you've got leaves and mown grass and stuff, it's to prevent slipping. That's all it's for.
When you're on the pad.
Because you are doing a run-up. It's not like, some holes you can just stand and throw, the longer holes, you do a run-up, just like an outfielder throwing a ball to home plate. They're gonna do a run-up, and it's to prevent slipping. So that's one that can definitely... My same concern, Pat. I'd be worried about them getting stolen.
Right. What is, let's say, the next meeting, we approve all this, and we get it going. What is your timetable? Is it this fall, or next spring are we looking at?
If we could get the baskets, you'd see us out there every day putting baskets this ball.
Because I mean, it's not gonna snow till November at least, and you still play out there.
We play, we love playing in the fall because the trees and the weeds are down. So that's our favorite time to play, that spring.
Okay. I just was curious about a timetable. It looks like we're...
Yeah, we would love to get started this fall.
Good, good. All right, appreciate it, guys.
And other comments, or?
Yeah. Will you have some numbers for us at the next planning session?
I can just tell you roughly, you're figuring about $500 per basket. So that's 4,500.
Okay.
Okay. I need to call, you got an estimate on concrete pads. We really need to get a guy out there and just tell us. We thought 200, 300, but it would, we need to find out for sure. And then you'd be talking, what, 11? Yes, 11 pads. We would use the seven that are there, but we would need 11 new ones.
And then for the baskets, you'd put like Quick Creed or something like that?
Yes, each basket does require, I just read, 60 to 80 pounds in the ground to anchor that in place. And yeah, that's a cost.
So if you could put, you know, put some solid, because I got this stuff for the 15th hole, 15-hole, but...
He just did the 18 to me today.
Now we're up 18, which is probably, it makes sense.
It does.
You know, because why build half a turn, half a court, and then have to rebuild the rest of it? I think, I think it's, like Barry said, getting things in town for that we can do. You look at the pickleball nets that you lobbied for, I mean, I've still people there all the time now. And sometimes they move them around. They seem to be taking care of them. And we're using it, and there's a lot of people that, that soccer pitch, that didn't cost us anything. And now that we got the lights on it, there's kids there every night playing. So, you know, I mean, this thing, it keeps people busy, and I think we need that. And, you know...
Promotes health, too.
Nice thing about...
Gets kids outside running, you know, Mike Grant gets his little one around out there. It's fresh air, it's exercise.
Yeah, off the phone for a minute.
Yeah, yeah.
The nice thing about pickleball and frisbee, it's low-impact, so pretty much anybody can do it.
And disc golf, other than the discs, it's free. There's no green fees.
Right, right.
I got kind of an off-the-wall question for Doug, Doug Tarr, if he's listening. I don't know. Doug, there's those cement pads by the old wellness center on the backside. They're about six-by-six squares. They look in pretty good shape. Are you planning, could that be something they could use out there?
Potentially. We'll see what the sizes are that they need, but potentially we could utilize some of those.
They're nice, they're nice squares. I see them.
Those would work. On shorter holes, you don't need as long of them.
Yeah, some things we can look at.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of pieces that we can put together and start, you know, like the fundraising and stuff like that, and getting the money, number one, and getting started on it. I think that's, I think it's a good, I think it's a way to go, and we need to, we need more of that.
We're excited about it, if you can't tell.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, this is a case of where the money is on the backside. It takes two people or more to organize this. None of us up here even gave two hoots about it. So if we got two people fired up about doing the labor and the work as far as the planning and laying it out, the money to me seems, you know, money's money, but it seems insignificant on the backside of what this could be. So that's, same with pickleball, too. I felt that same way, too.
So I think if you, you know, put the data together for us, and plan to be ready for September the 8th for the next workshop, and let's sit in the ground, hit the ground short, running, and...
We'll get on it.
Mr. Don, did you have any input?
No, I think it's a great vision. I just have some things that I need to look into as far as the placement of everything, and how it may or may not impact cities' use and access to different things back there. And I also think that it'd be a good idea to, hopefully, someone from the Soccer Commission can attend the workshop and give us, if they have any concerns or comments, you know, we don't wanna be accused of ram-rotting something through without asking everyone involved. So I think with a little publicity and contacting them, we can get somebody to come and offer some input. But I just wanna thank Mr. Hewling and Mr. Winters for their vision.
Yeah, one question. So do you think we'll have to move any of those new trees that were planted?
No.
Okay.
In fact, if soccer ever goes away, we got more we wanna plant.
Thank you.
There's some pretty bare holes out there, some new ones.
Sure.
What we're looking at would keep all the baskets and all the tee pads off of where they play soccer. Stay away from all that.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
You'd be throwing across soccer fields if they weren't there. But the actual equipment would be along the peripheral.
Right, right. Okay, well, we'll look forward for the next meeting on the 8th, and let's get this thing moving. Everybody's all right? We're gonna move on. Time to pay some bills. The entertainment motion to approve the claims submitted by staff in the amount of $163,161.18.
I make a motion to approve the claims.
A second.
Motion by Mr. Lamos, second by Ms. Greffie. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have no ordinances or resolutions tonight. We'll buy that. Next item is the consent agenda. Consent agenda will be, conclude the approval of the meetings, minimums from the Thursday, August 14th, regular session. Schedule the net should regular session for Thursday, September 11th at 6:00 in the city council chambers, and approve renewing the alcohol license for Fowler Family Dollar, number 32965411, Central Avenue West. The entertainment motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Palmer.
A second.
Second by Mr. Holmstrom. Notice I'm getting better at saying your name, Bill.
You're doing great.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Brings us to our staff's report. Chief Morrison.
I just have a couple things tonight. Officer Brass starts the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy on Tuesday, so we wish him well. Wednesday, we were up at the high school doing the Forever 17 display with the State Patrol. It is a reminder for kids to slow down and stay off their phones, not be distracted. It's about three 17-year-olds who were killed in a speed-related accident. So that was good to be up there with the kids on the weekend, on Wednesday. Last week, weekend, there was a large turnout for the car show. That went well. Had a few parking complaints, but that's probably to be expected with that number of people there. The barbecue event also was well-attended, and we had no complaints or concerns there. This weekend is the garage sale event, and that usually results in a few fender benders and parking complaints, so we'll monitor that situation. And then schools started back, and so we've stepped up patrols at the crosswalks, bus stops, and around the schools. So we do our traffic in the morning and the afternoon when the schools release things. That's all I've got. Just questions?
Questions, Mr. Lamos?
Has the status changed for PDQ as far as selling stuff?
No.
Okay. How can they still have it on the shelves?
I've asked the investigator, and he said they could. I've gone in there, monitored. We've sent people in to try and buy on numerous occasions, and they haven't. But yeah, I'm gonna reach out to them one more time, because now they have officially expired any chance of getting it. So I'm gonna reach out one more time, because then there's no point.
I just had one complaint about the barbecue.
Yep.
It was making my mouth water, just smelling it like half a mile away.
Yeah.
You can become a judge, Barry.
All right, any other questions for Mr.?
I had a question for Mark.
Yep, go ahead.
You've got a lot going on right now, and you've got your officer going to training, and you've got all of the crosswalk visuals and things to take care of. And last time we talked, you said that your volunteer service amounted to basically two people who have full-time jobs currently. Are you looking at all into maybe building up that volunteer workforce?
We sure can.
Reserve officers?
We have in the past. It's been a struggle to find volunteers, especially with all the training that's involved in it. But I continue to try to look. Most departments are now moving to part-time officers. We have two that are full-time police officers elsewhere, or they were, but now they work part-time here. So it's easier to find those than it is reserve officers. But yeah, we can continue to look into that.
Could a reserve officer handle, like, your crosswalk observations and things?
Yeah.
That would be...
Yes. That would be good.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, sir. Mr. Tarr?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The library project, we kinda touched upon that at, I think, the last meeting a little bit. So it looks like that's moving along finally a little bit towards the end. We're waiting on Tony's Concrete, who's been hired to do that stairwell on that north exit door, and then I believe a handrail. And I think that's all that'll be left for that project to get completed. So that'll be a good one. It looks really nice. I know Ann &amp; Em Electric did the, reset the canister light, so if you go by there at night as well, still has that neat appearance that that lighting was given there. Had a pre-construction meeting last week with Heartland Asphalt and Mark Crawford, our engineer. Earlier this week, however, the sign company in charge of placing traffic control inadvertently put some signs up when they weren't supposed to and where they weren't supposed to. And we got it ironed out fairly quickly, but it did raise some concerns. I did wanna bring up, Heartland Asphalt is responsible for doing the notifications and things. We've been in touch with daycare and a few people up in that area already, just giving people a little bit of a heads-up that something's coming. But Heartland is the one that will be making the communication, because they're the only ones that know what their schedule's gonna be. It's always, with these asphalt companies, it's always the weather that's gonna dictate when they're doing, what they're doing, how they're doing, why they're doing. So it's just better, instead of having that information come from us, we would like it just to come from them. That way, all the factual information is just point A to point B. But anyway, we still giving people the heads-up, and I think people kinda know. We've been receiving a few phone calls here and there, wire the signs at least in the area. And we'll explain the project. The good news is, it will not be close for anywhere close to the amount of time it was last year for the Water Main Project. It's a milling overlay. There's a little bit of concrete patching here and there. It's really not gonna take too long. So I'm just hoping that the hard shutdown will only affect for, you know, I'm hoping, no more than 10 days, and I'm hoping less, actually, with good weather. But we'll see. I hate to predict that and give false hope. Staff's working on the mowing and trimming. Still been a nightmare, but they're still hard at it. We were fortunate enough, however, this week to add a couple new part-time seasonals to fill the place of the, we originally had four going this year. Three of them were students. We lost those three. We picked up two more this week, so that's gonna be beneficial to staff. Then the downside is, is we've been averaging, in the last few weeks, probably two mowers. I mean, they go down. It's not, they're not going down because of lack of maintenance, or no oil, or anything like that. It's just they're, you know, when you use these things, day in and day out, for the number of hours, especially this year, you're gonna have some parts break and things of that nature. We did budget for a new one this year, and we're working on it. We may see that purchase coming down in the very near future. So we're working on getting those up and running as quickly as possible. If staff can make the repairs, that's great. But if not, then you'll see in the claims, you know, the place where we purchased them from, we may have them do some repairs as well. So staff is also working on new bench pads, sidewalk replacement at Van Shell, also installing one of the new Doggy Do-Do stations. So where this, that project really grew, but it grew because we're always keeping in mind, there's actually a minimum that we have to pay in concrete delivery on how much that is. So to waste a yard of concrete, or even two yards of concrete, and then have to pay for four no matter what, it seems to our benefit to always make sure we have close to a full load as we can get. So that project's gonna take us, I mean, I think they got the last ones poured today. We gotta do some backfilling, some dirt work next week. So it only took them a few days to, you know, get some of that done. So I'm excited about that. They're also working on, they've worked on some alley complaint work, some storm sewer intakes. We had, you know, trees, that's a constant, you know, where we'll get a branch that falls out, or a big lamb half tree. And then we also have property that we've added this year, you know, when we tear down a house, we're trying to get to those, to maintain those as well. We still have some dirt work at a couple of those previously demoed, and some landscaping to do in a couple of those spots yet this fall. We should be able to plant seed. I believe the DOT timeframe is typically about September 15th. That's when we'll start looking to do some planting. And we may even look at doing some hydro seeding to try to speed those efforts up a little bit. Chief Morrison and I continue to make our nuisance drones every week, if not one day, multiple days. We've been working really hard at that. I believe we have one vehicle that was towed actually just today. And, you know, it's just trying to stay on top of it the best we can. We're also getting ready for the last day at the pool, which is Monday. I believe we are on school schedule this week. However, Saturday and Sunday will be normal hours, and then Monday, 1 to 5. And from my standpoint, I think it's been a really good year. It'll be interesting to see what the numbers all look like. Of course, we'll be getting you guys a report here at some point, probably in the next month or so, once we tally everything up, see where the year, where we were this year. We're hoping to move out to our new compost site location, which is at 1236 Olive Avenue, just south of the CTI concrete plant. Hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we're just waiting on getting some signs installed, and then we're actually waiting on a sign. So as we get the signs, we just wanna make sure everything's in place, because the way it's gonna operate is kind of a big horseshoe, two gates. There's an entrance-only, exit-only. We just don't want people out there getting confused. We'll get staff out there for some brief training before we even do that. But it's right around the corner. Electrical, everything else is, everything else is in We have also been able to add, on short notice, two work-based learning students to work with our staff about an hour and a half, four days a week. We were approached by Renee Zerbal last year. You know, we weren't able to really get some things kinda ironed out on that. It was a little bit different program than they have this year. However, what that does is, students, it's, I don't know if you guys remember, the old DECA programs are different things, where kids will come and do some work. There's no salary that goes along with that. They're going to come and help city staff. They're gonna be put to work a little bit during a couple periods out of their day. And that's actually gonna benefit the city, too. And I think it's a win-win. I think it teaches kids responsibility. I think it teaches kids maybe to appreciate a little bit more some of these things that we have, that we offer to them, you know, such as a disc golf course, such as the things we have in our parks, maybe take better care of them. So looking forward to see how that program helps us. And just a ton of thanks, guys. So I guess I'll open it up for questions. And just a ton of thanks, guys, so I guess I'll open it up for questions.
Mr. Lamos?
I had a citizen comment about some of the string trimming in the parking lot over here.
Okay.
It was, can they do that at seven o'clock or seven-thirty instead of when all the cars are there?
I've had that before.
The few cars that got, had a lot of grass on them.
I understand, I understand. We try, we try really hard to do that when we can do that. There's been a few times where we can't do that, where I've, it's growing so fast right now, if they're doing it multiple days, or I'll say, hey, that looks horrible, I want it looking good. Instead of waiting for the next day, sometimes the guys will go pull the trigger and go knock it out. But yeah, I understand those concerns. We're trying.
Did you discuss blowing grass into the street with the new guys?
Yep, and...
By the pool today, there were, a lot of grass was blown into the street.
Right, right.
And you know, right there, that small area, you pretty much gotta blow it all the way across the sidewalk.
Right, yeah. Even when you do do that, too, you get some on the street. They are supposed to go back and blow it off right away when they do do that, but you're right. So, but we do try to tell them, yeah, never blow grass into the street if you can help it. Always try to make extra two passes, three passes with the big mowers, because they can throw it fifteen feet, you know. So, but yeah, sometimes that needs readdressed, and I'll definitely readdress that with Jeremy. Thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
I know you've taken a little bit of heat this week. One of the things is on this signage thing. A friendly reminder, turned out to be quite the storm. And just a reminder that, you know, the state of Iowa, in Chapter Three-eighteen, gives their obstructions in the highway right-of-way. And then includes a placement of billboards, signs, or advertising devices within the highway right-of-way. And it seems to me that we just model our laws after the state, and we don't want them on our streets.
Correct. The signs that are in the right-of-way on the highway, that is state, that's still state law, you know, and we do, we try to help enforce that for them as well, and we do model that. The one thing I've been noticing is that unfortunately, is every Facebook post going out in the media, on social media, is gonna be met with troll comments. There's always people that troll Facebook, and it's always negative, and it's always something. But there's also positive. We did also hear, I think I did pay attention to some of that this week, and there is also some positive. We try to embrace the positive, and then if there's negative, and it's meaningful negative, we'll take light of that. I mean, we will try to do better, we will try to improve, if it's legitimate. If it's just a troll being a troll, and really, you can tell. I mean, some people can't spell very well, and, you know, you could typically tell someone's intellect by what they post. So, you know, it just seems that the negative does always outweigh the positive, so we just kind of gotta go through the weeds a little bit. I do remember back in the, earlier in my career, when we didn't have social media, man, I liked, I liked things a lot more then, because it's not just this week, it's frequently, and we understand that as enforcement officers. And also as Public Works Director, you know, there's just certain amounts of negativity that you're just always gonna have to be prone to.
And it's garage sale weekend, I get that. But Mid-American doesn't want signs on their poles.
Right.
You know, they've come out with a big policy on that, and we don't want signs on our poles either, so...
Correct. And it's consistency. I thought today was a fair warning to just let people, and some people did go, I noticed that, there was a bunch right early this morning. So I called Mitch. He put together a nice little posting, I think it went out, you know. We really, you know, there was one comment on there about, well, how does that affect traffic or anything? Well, you know, visibility, you know, a motorcycle from a distance can be hidden behind a very small sign. It doesn't take much. So it really is important. It's just sometimes people need to be explained what reality is, and we'll help with that if we have to. If people would just call, you know, instead of maybe, or if they have some advice for us, we'll take advice, we love it, you know. So we're just gonna do our best to work with what we have.
Right, okay, well, that's all we can ask.
I appreciate it.
I'd just add to that, when people are done with their yard sales, go get your sign.
Please.
You know where you put them? Pick them up.
I'm sure we'll be picking some up tomorrow, because there were some that were not moved yet this afternoon, so I'm sure in the morning, we'll be checking on those.
Anybody else? Good.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Dunt?
I just want to mention that we had the closing this morning of the seven-hundred-thousand-dollar note with First Van Hampton for the four and six First Street Northwest properties. The asbestos abatement portion of the project will begin Tuesday morning. And that is expected to take about four weeks. Once that's completed, then we'll look into the next phase, apply for more grants from the state. And that's about all I have, unless anybody has any questions.
Mr. Lamos?
Ron, I got a question. It was in the claims, the tank insurance for the airport. Is there any other insurance company to get a better price? And is that built into our fuel price?
Yeah. I mean, our fuel price basically is, you know, we have to follow the market, whatever the market will bring, we have to stay within what the market will bear to sell fuel. But that company is affiliated with Iowa Association of Municipal Utilities, and so they specialize in that. There aren't a lot of companies that specialize in that type of coverage, and they're, they do, and so I guess that's why the majority of airports utilize them, but I can look into it, I guess.
So are we selling our fuel always at a profit, or are we losing money on it?
No, we do not lose money on it. We, we always, you know, we make some money per gallon, but it fluctuates on how much we're making. We try to set the price as high as we can without being out of the market.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Mr. Dunt? Don't see any, thank you, sir.
Yes, you bet.
Next, we got council reports. I was gonna start with Kristen, Ms. Rhodey.
With school starting again, I just wanted to bring up something that impacts a lot of children in the community. That would be the stop-arm violations for school buses. Every time someone passes a bus with the stop-arm, stop-arm out, they do put all the children at risk. It's not just a traffic violation, it could be a life-threatening risk to the children. Last year there, or since last year, there have been fifteen calls for service on stop-arm violations for school buses, and to me, that's about fifteen too many. The penalty for a first-time stop-arm violation is, with the ticket and court costs and everything, is six-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars, and a loss of license for thirty days, rightfully so. That's more than the fine for driving while suspended or driving without insurance. That amount goes up to a thousand dollars, and a loss of license for ninety days on the second offense. And I will say, the school and the PD do a really good job of getting things handled when there is a violation called in. I just think it's important to remind the community to slow down, pay attention. First, the bus will put on the yellow flashing lights, signaling it's preparing to stop, when you should slow down. The bus driver then puts on the red flashing lights and puts out the stop-arm, because the children are starting to get off the bus, or on the bus. This is where people should stop, regardless of where the bus has parked on the street. If you aren't sure, just stop. A few seconds of waiting is worth it to keep the children safe.
All right, thank you. Next, Mr. Lamos?
I have no comment tonight.
All right, thank you. Mr. Davies?
Well, it was a busy weekend, last weekend. There were numerous events, and I just want to thank the individuals and groups that were involved. The Faith Baptist Church hosted the Car Cruise on Friday night. Jeff and Tracy Spear, I think, worked with that, but they had their car show on Saturday. Charlene Prouly-Janson, the barbecue. Adam Akers, the Veterans Events on Saturday. Sean Deitz and KLMJ Radio had a music event at the Band Shell on Friday. So there's a lot going on, especially want to just thank the chamber staff and board for all the efforts to help coordinate and make sure that those, I think, all went off without a hitch. And then one other thing, just wanted to mention the Three County, Highway Three Garage Sale, which was mentioned this weekend. You can pick up a list of those participating at Center One, and Casey's and Quick Star, I believe. There might be others, too, but I remember those three. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Palmer?
I want to talk a little bit about pool closings. And our pool's gonna close on Monday, Labor Day. But due to staffing issues, Iowa Falls Pool closed the first week of August. They just didn't have staff, go back to school, whatever. Sheffield had some mechanical breakdowns, they closed about, I think they closed about the tenth of the month. My proposal is, since it's, let's say, after the fifteenth of August, if we have situations like that in our area, why not our pool honor their pool certificates? The cost of a Coke and a couple of candy bars is our concession standard, definitely pay for, pay back whatever labor. If they like our pool, maybe they'll get a pool pass from us next year instead of, they're there, you know. So I guess that'd be my suggestion for next year, is if, if we put into place, if your community closes the pool down, for whatever reason like that, we honor their pool certificates and bring some goodwill, at least give some place that kids can swim, you know, if they're not sixteen, somebody's gotta bring them to Hampton, somebody's gotta fill the tank full of gas, somebody's gotta stop somewhere and get something on the way home. I think it does our city a little tourism help and a little bit of financial help. You know, when retail sales in Iowa ranks forty-eighth or forty-ninth out of everybody, it's time to cash in where you can. And if we can make an extra couple of bucks on a piece of pizza, a piece of chicken somewhere, or a restaurant, or whatever, just by us offering, a couple of kids get to swim free for the afternoon with a pass from somebody else, I think that's good money spent, or good money taken in, or good logic on that. So anyway, that's my two cents worth on the pool. That's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Holmstrom?
Well, I just kind of wanted to echo what Jim was saying. It was a great weekend to be in Hampton, with something for everybody, from the young kids at the bouncy houses, to the barbecue, to the car show, to the music venue at the Band Shell, the white sidewalls. It was just a very enjoyable weekend to be in Hampton, and it seems like more and more, every weekend, something's going on, and there's something for everybody, and it's just, it's just a good time to be in Hampton, so...
Thank you. Ms. Greifey?
The flower baskets are coming down tomorrow. And I don't have to water tomorrow. They were great this year. They really took a hard hit with the ninety-degree, two-week stretch we had there. But we're not, we're not giving up. They'll be back again next year. So they're coming down tomorrow, and thank you, city, for all your help with that. Thanks for Mark, for helping us water. We're gonna take them down, store them overnight in Holly's truck, and then take them out to the compost pile Saturday morning, clean them out, and then we'll leave them there for you to pick up, right? Okay, got that. Faith and Four Letter Words, and our little thing that went on downtown Tuesday night last week, was really a lot of fun. I think it went over real well. It wasn't as big of a crowd as we had the year before, but still, we sold fifty-five tickets, and I think that's, that's good. So anyway, I was pretty excited about that, and we're through our big estate sale that we had last weekend, and I'm still tired, so that's all I got.
Thank you. All right, Mayor, report just a couple items, and they're repeat. Last week was a great weekend in Hampton. I thought it was, there's a lot of stuff going on, everybody was busy, everybody was having a great time. The crowd at the park for the car show was phenomenal. I mean, there was, I sat up there for about a couple hours, and hate to say it, I got cold, but I'll take it, because there's more coming, but I think it was great. And I don't know if there's that much going on this weekend, but it is Labor Day weekend. It's gonna be a beautiful weekend, and our pool is open still, so come on in. And the water's fine, so... Another item, I always try to find a quote every once in a while, and this is something that caught my eye, and it's something that I think about every day. It says, "Every day, every morning, will you have the choice to wake up with a grateful heart or a complaining tongue? Your choice will be, will set the tone for your day. Choose wisely." It's just something to think about. I mean, it's, it's a great, great wisdom, in my opinion. And that's all I got, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn this regular session of the city council.
So moved.
A second.
Motion by Ms. Greifey, second by, was that, Mr. Lamos? Davies?
Yeah.
Mr. Davies? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Or adjourned? Thank you.